Prayer and then the pledge to the flag. I'm gonna call on Chief Deputy Todd Graeme to open this with the air place.
Thank you, Lord. Stay heavily followed, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity for everyone to get together and give you thanks so much for all the things that you that you provided for us, Lord, our families, Lord. Thank you for taking care of us and our coworkers and our constituents. Dear Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you be with us this morning, Lord, with the commission's representatives and give them the knowledge, the skills, and the capabilities to make Covington County a better place, Lord, not just for one, but for all of Covington County, Lord. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for each and everything that you have given us. We ask you to take care of our comrades as they protect our country. And, Lord, we ask you, Lord, for the people who are outside in the country who have had all this devastation, Lord, please be with them. Be with you, dear Lord. Thank you, Lord, for all so much, so much that you did, Lord. Do you try and wait for it? Jesus, may we pray. Amen.
Amen. This pledge together. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will you be seated? I do appreciate all of you being here with us today. We have no scheduled public hearings or comments from citizens, nor do we have awards and presentations, but we do have some other elected officials with us today, and we opened the floor for you guys. Judge, anything at all?
Not today.
Okay. Sheriff, anything at this time?
I do want to give everybody an update on our can. Robbery. We have all suspects are arrested and being detained. I think there might be a couple of, one of the girls that got out on bond. But they've all been arrested, and the case is pretty much complete. We're just waiting for the court systems and everything.
Okay.
Anyone who was involved in helping us find those people, we greatly appreciate it. And hopefully, we won't ever have this happen again, but we're really.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Commissioners, under the consent section, you have the minutes from the October 10 meeting. You guys received those by email, had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections that you note or changes, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion and second to approve those items. All in favor say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Those are approved. Under old business, we had mentioned a couple of times about having some openings on the personnel review board. Commissioners, on page two, three, and four, you have applicants that have expressed a willingness to serve. We have two slots open. We can appoint one now, another one later, or none now. If you decide to choose to delay, we can appoint two. And you've had a chance to review those, I believe, as well. So I would ask what your thoughts are on board appointments for this board, which was recently activated, but normally, commonly, is activated only every three or four years, honestly, or less often. But what are your thoughts?
I have an applicant that I'd like for you to consider. Dwight Michael. He worked, of course, for Parks and Recreation here for 38-plus years as a public employee, supervisor and administrator. I think that he has the experience needed to review personnel. So I'd like to submit his name.
Okay. That's one of the three in your packet, commissioners. Anybody else have a name that you'd like to propose?
I'd like a second. Our recommendation of Dwight Michael.
Okay.
Known him for so long.
Right. Anybody else have a name right now? We'll vote on that then, and then we'll consider others, filling the other slot in a later meeting, unless you have thoughts to the contrary.
I would still, like, I mentioned trying to get with someone, and I run into him and pass him. We haven't got to talk about it.
Okay.
But I'll still have someone I'd like to speak with, see if he'd be interested.
Alright, so we have a motion to appoint Dwight Michael at this point. We had a second on that, and you both have a comment or discussion on that. We'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, we'll see if Dwight is appointed. We'll get word to him. We appreciate his willingness to serve, as well as these others whose names are in discussion or consideration at this time. Thank them for their willingness to serve. New business. Consider approval of grants for cats with the state of Alabama. Come on, Tamian. Tell us what we need to know on this. Commissioners, pages five through nine in your packet have information that's pertinent to this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our dot has announced that any transit that is going through the 5311 grant, they are going to contribute $100,000, and that's 100% refundable. Anything after that will go back to the 50% paid, 50% owed.
So the first $100,000 of your budget is covered at 100%?
100%.
No match, and then anything above that? Let's see if we can.
Yes, sir.
Save several thousand dollars for the commission.
I say we accept it, say thank you.
Anybody have questions for Tamian on that, or you just jumping at the bids to approve?
Make a motion.
Take the money or run. Alright, I heard a motion and a second, and any other questions? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. I didn't hear any nays, so alright, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to report to us, Tamian?
No new news.
Okay. Still no new buses.
I'm gonna have to be going to building buses, I guess.
Yeah. We also have an appointment on the South Alabama Regional Airport. The commission appoints one slot. We make a joint appointment with the City of Oppenandalousia for another slot, and then each of those entities have one that they appoint. Our individual appointment is up for consideration at this time. And you have information on page 10 of your packet. And presently serving in our slot there is Donald Barton. Donald has served for a number of years. He has a keen interest in the activities in and around the airport. He is a faithful contributor to their meetings. I have the opportunity to go to a lot of their meetings. Only if health keeps him away is he not there. But I talked to him about a week and a half ago, and he feels his health is such that he can serve longer, and so he would like to be considered, or we certainly could propose someone else. But my recommendation is to renew this appointment.
I agree with you, Greg. I've kind of spoken with him, been out there to a couple of the meetings, and he's always very active and seems to be very energetic and in tune to everything that's going on out there. So I'd go ahead and make a motion that we reappoint Donald.
I second it.
There's a motion, a second, that we reappoint Donald Barton. Anybody else have a name or questions? If not, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. Alright. We have a request for a family cemetery, and I'm gonna ask Karen to give us the details on this, and we'll get the attorney in, or we ready?
Let's just start with the attorney.
Let's do that. That'd be good.
Okay. I've received additional facts since we, the commission received the initial request, and there is nothing that this commission needs to do. There's no action here. This qualifies, as we understand it, as a family burial plot, and you all have no role in, no further role.
Judge, I think the same probably holds true in your office. Is that correct? If it's a family cemetery or family land?
That's right.
And do we still track those burials, like you inventory cemeteries broadly?
I think that it would be smart for the family to file a description of the cemetery in my reported department, so it is on the public record.
Okay.
But I don't know that there's anything that requires that.
Okay. We'll communicate from our end, and I'm sure they'll talk to you again as well. And I would like for us to encourage that they recorded it as a, I just think that makes sense for the long term.
Yes.
Okay. So we're not gonna act on that unless somebody just has a handkerchief. Alright, we'll move on to the next one then. Okay. Alright, next item is D. Consider approval for overtime grant for the sheriff's department. Karen, we'll come back to you, and then we'll probably ask the.
Chief Graeme, pass information on this grant opportunity.
Chief, appreciated your prayer while ago. There's an awful lot to pray for around the world right now.
Oh, good morning. It's an honor to do that, no problem, sir. I bring you guys some good news this morning. So it's time to kick off our ADECA overtime project that we get pretty much every year. I think that we've had it every year that we've actually taken office, since we've taken office back in 2019, starting on up. But basically, it's a funding from ADECA that provides monies to where that we can actually allow our deputies to work overtime. This overtime is allocated in certain increments. In other words, it'll start off like somewhere around $4,000 to $5,000 in the pot. Once we spend that, then they automatically will normally turn around and refund it if we're doing well and whatnot, and keeping up with our paperwork. And we do that on a monthly basis. And I make sure that I keep Miss Karen and her girls over there, you know, very well up to date on it, provide them the paperwork to where that they make sure that they get all their monies back that they spend for reimbursement. And we keep a very, very tight, tight, tight calculation on it. Last year, we ended up spending $16,659, which was really a cool breeze for our deputies. We actually used it quite a bit on Alabama 137, where we have our problem areas at. I know you guys have heard a lot of complaints out there and whatnot. But we try to find our problem areas and try to keep our deputies in those particular spots on their overtime details. So it really helps the county out a lot. I think, basically, this is a no-brainer. I think that we need to keep this going on. We do not get reimbursement on mileage, though. They will not do that. The forestry actually, overtime project does give us reimbursement on mileage, but however, the ADECA does not. So that's really the only monies that we actually come out of the county for.
And the ADECA funding is 100%? There's no match on it, except the mileage?
That's correct. It's 100%.
Okay.
No matching.
Alright, commissioners. You guys have a question for them on this, or thoughts on it?
Don't this money go, it's not a separate check to these officers. It comes in their regular check, don't it?
Yes, sir. It's in their regular check.
So they don't have to wait for it. Whenever they get it, it comes around.
No, sir. They automatically get paid, and Miss Carrie.
I was hoping it was still done that way.
Yes, sir, it is. It is. And we just get reimbursement for it.
Is it mostly at night and weekends that you use?
Is there a certain amount of time we can use it?
No, 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 no. Do you commonly use it at nighttime or weekends?
Yes, ma'am. We commonly use it from 3 till 12 at night.
And you've got officers enough to work this?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We make sure to keep tabs on that as well, so. And they have to actually sign in a sheet every time they work it. In other words, it hangs on my door, and when they want to work it, they actually come and sign in for it, and I have to look at it to see where they're working and what time they're working, where they're working at, so.
Alright, is there a motion to approve this grant?
Second.
Motion and second? Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. Karen, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd, appreciate the efforts you all make. Next is consider solicitation bids for three patrol vehicles. I would ask Karen to share that with us, but it looks like the sheriff is gonna come right ahead.
Yes.
Trying to give her something to do.
Well, Karen? We've been approved to purchase some patrol vehicles this year. And the 2024 model year, which will be coming up soon, they've gone up $9,000. So we're trying to get these vehicles bought before we have to buy 2024s. So locally and statewide, we're unable to fulfill the needs that we have. However, we have found someone that is out of state, and several, and we would just like to place a, put a bid proposal out for it.
Okay. So the request is to approve requesting bids?
Requesting.
For our specific patrol vehicle, general, or pickups or sedans? What are we looking at?
At this point, I'm pretty much, we'll take what's available.
SUVs or just whatever?
SUVs or trucks.
And this was a budgeted item?
It was a budgeted item. But there's also a spec, we have a jail administrator, and he had an approval for a vehicle for the jail, and he said his needed to come first, so. So he wants y'all to allow him to purchase off the state bid for his.
Well, he got on, he got a state bid, didn't he?
There is one available.
Okay.
But he would like for y'all to act on that as well.
Okay.
So under the 2023 model year, there are just no vehicles?
There, there, we got, you know, there's a strike going on up in the big cities, and getting them built's just, it's not happening right now, but we still having to eat for them.
So we would like, we would like to give approval, request bids. You're putting together a bid packet, and we're gonna ask you to share it with Karen and then we'll get it out, help you with that any way we can. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion and second? Again, this is a budgeted item, so it's not additional money, just trying to get it. Before the prices go up, if there's nothing else, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Oppose, same sign. Okay? And the next item is about a canine officer or unit.
We have a canine that we have been working with, and her name is Ingrid. She's two years old, and she's coming from Defuniak Springs. Her trainer is Clemmons.
Casey.
Casey Clemmons. Casey Clemmons. He's a two-year-old Staffordshire Terrier, and he's ready to go. The funding for the canine will be, you know, we will purchase it with discretionary funds, and that's, we'll keep it up with discretionary funds. And we have an officer that we're ready to issue the canine to. And we just need, it's not really a bid thing, because it's under $30,000, but we wanted to make sure that the commission was okay, because it would require some.
How many canine dogs? How many dogs do you have?
This will make four. This will make four.
This is.
Where are the current dogs now?
One officer has them, one deputy has one, and we have two at the jail right now. And they, we got a big old box back there they've just found full of contraband and things.
And where are you keeping the ones at the jail now?
One of them goes home with the officer at night. They both go home with the officers at night. But during the daytime hours, they're in the hallway between the chapel and the, there's a kennel in there.
Can we find somewhere else to house them other than in the hallway or there?
They would be outside in the weather.
You can't find one of those igloo things that they could go in, or they breathe away, something like that. I'm so disappointed, let's say it that way. We've talked about this before, and they do go in the chapel. I had an older lady that actually went Wednesday night to chapel services.
And the dog was in there?
And they knew the dog was there, yeah. So, you know, something's gonna happen.
Let me take care of that this week.
I mean, I just think we need to find a way to put the dogs outside, in some kind of contained area, something that, I agree with sheltering them. But sheltering them inside that chapel area is not the place.
Okay. Well, I was gonna understand they were in the hallway between the, between the front and the chapel. So there are officers that are in the chapel, but we'll just have to do some moving around.
Well, now, Thomas had told us that everybody was moving out from back there when we went to visit. Wasn't that what he said? They were gonna move all their offices from the back to the other side?
I think that's correct.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. We'll get them out of the, I mean, I thought they were out of the chapel. I thought they were hanging around in the hallway in the kennel.
Apparently, this night, they were in one of those offices. One of them was. I don't know how many.
Okay. Alright, well, I will get on that immediately then.
I have a question, Sheriff. Ironically, I had gone to YouTube last night to look at something, and one of our meetings popped up from a previous viewing, and it happened to be the meeting where you brought the new drug dog in. Forget the name. Last name was Huggins.
Yeah, it was Thomas.
No, the dog. What was the dog's name?
Bruno.
Bruno, Bruno Huggins, okay. Anyway, a question was asked by one of the commissioners about the aggressiveness of the dog, and if I'm not mistaken, I'd have to listen to it again. I thought you made a comment that said that we had no need for patrol dogs, patrol canines.
That's correct.
But this is gonna be a.
No, no, no. There's a difference.
It says new canine for patrol.
New canine for patrol, this is a narcotics canine. It searches out narcotics. A patrol canine would be some, would be a canine that would do actually three things. Narcotics, tracking, and attack.
Okay.
I don't need the attack dog.
Okay, so this is not an attack?
No.
I was just trying to clarify.
This is not an attack dog.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Other questions? Comments?
I'm not against having these dogs if you think they're a necessary part. My concern right now is, is not having somewhere to keep them, even in the event that the trainer who takes it home has to leave out of town, and they have to leave that dog at home.
We kennel them.
But somewhere else. And I just think we need to have a responsible place that we're.
If a trainer, if a handler goes out of town, we kennel them at the vet.
Have you got all this written up, ma'am?
I've given it to Karen.
Okay.
Other questions? Well, to move forward, we would entertain a motion approving purchase of this canine that's been presented, or? Did you say how much it was?
It's $7,500. We pay for it out of discretionary fund.
Alright. What are your wishes?
The policy about how we're gonna house them. It does state they go to a.
If one of our trainer, if one of our handlers was to go out of town, we will house the canine at a vet. That's when he get, as a matter of fact, we have one that's going out of town this weekend, and he had asked me to, if he could let the dog's old trainer house him, and I said, no. Could you go to the vet? That's the rules.
One of them mentioned to me about that they were gonna let the other handlers keep the dog.
That's not, that's not what's in the policy.
Okay. Well, it was, it was mentioned that the other handler, one of the other handlers would take on the dog that belonged. Okay.
No, that's not what's in the policy.
Do you think it would help if, with all the handlers, if maybe someone off the commission or even Susan could sit down and explain all of this, where they do completely understand, along with you and Todd, so that there's no misunderstanding? Because you know we've had issues about it.
We've had one issue, and that was something that was, frankly, it was very unfortunate.
Absolutely.
And it could happen, it could happen anytime. But with those, with that issue, it was handled quickly. We understood what, and it should have never been housed at the house anyway. It shouldn't have. That employee is no longer working for us. I think we handled the issue as quickly as we possibly could. There is a policy, and it's very, very detailed. I just don't, I don't see the need in having someone tell us what we need to do to house these canines when it is covered under our policy.
There wouldn't be, as long as everybody abides by the policy, and I'm assuming that they will.
Well, that's up to me. If they don't abide by the policy, then we take disciplinary action.
How old is the dog? Did you?
Two.
Two?
Two years old.
You had ranked Bruno Huggins about like third in the country or fifth in the country? What is this one? Is there a ranking?
This one's a brand-new dog.
So there's.
It's not been to any competitions.
No competitions yet.
Questions? Any other questions? Comments? A motion to approve would be in order at this time. I think we answered the questions that were raised. I realize there's a good bit of concern still, just because of the history that we have. Anybody choose to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
As long as the standards are upheld, that we.
Policy is followed. Okay. So there's a motion. Let me go, hey, is there a second?
The thing is, the only thing I'm gonna say is, in these situations, I think Tommy said it before about getting the cart in front of the horse. I think it was pertaining to something else with a dog or something. Tommy's been several, several months ago about that. And like you said, it's a very sensitive subject right now, from the stuff that has transpired with the other ones. If we can get the ones at the jail, I would say housed properly.
More adequately.
And we have a policy where these dogs are going to go to a vet. Now, the trouble is, the vet trained to handle these dogs. I understand, you know, they go off of certain commands or so forth. I don't understand the whole dog situation, but are these people, the vets, gonna be capable of, other than, say, come here, puppy?
Well, I mean, as far as the vet being capable and everything, they house all kinds of dogs. You know, whether it's someone's Chihuahua or someone's, you know, Big Great Dane, they house all kinds of dogs, and they're professionals. So they also know that these are patrol cars. But none of these patrol, none of these dogs are trained for attack. None of them are. The last one that we had, that one that caused us all the problems, there was something wrong with that dog.
Yeah.
And I just, I don't know, but that dog is no longer with us, neither is the handler.
How many dogs are you planning on?
This is it. Four was what I wanted, and this has been number four.
But the other two just stay at the jail?
They are available for call. So if these other two dogs are, well, they work the jail, and they work it regular, but they're also available for call. They're not required to be APOST certified to be a canine handler, but if they come to a call, they can come to the car once it's secure, run the dog around, alert, and they can leave.
So you're, you're taking the policy to the officer that is the trainer or handler?
Yes.
And they read and understand. Are they signing that they've read and understand it?
They sign it. They read, all officers sign that they've acknowledged the policy procedure manual.
This particular one?
I have given these to the officers, but I have not asked for them to sign anything.
Could we do that, too?
Yeah, I can do that.
Just a little bit more.
Sure.
Responsible.
Yes, ma'am.
And did I misunderstand, or did you just say, maybe I misunderstood, that the handler doesn't have to be APOST certified, or were you talking about?
Right. The handler does not have to be APOST certified to be certified with a canine.
So like a jailer could have the dog without? Alright, does that person receive any dog training, any handler training? Does that go somewhere that learns?
Yes, yes. We train down in Okaloosa County with the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office. They have a wonderful canine program down there. And it's free.
Ms. Morgan?
At the last meeting, Sheriff Turman shared the policy with me, and I reviewed it, just for you all to know. But I also passed it along to the insurance carrier, just to try to make sure that it was encompassing, you know, just from lessons learned across the state. I'm still waiting to hear back from them, and as soon as I do, obviously, we'll report to Sheriff Turman, but also to all of you about any other concerns that may be in the policy. But he has a good base of a policy, but it is still under review, if that helps alleviate some of these concerns about.
Can we, can we agree to incorporate anything that the insurance carrier expresses concern through the attorney? Okay, we'll incorporate that into the policy.
And I believe, we did not add it to insurance yet, because we're waiting on the review. So keep in mind that it is not, the last dog has not even been approved yet, as far as for insurance purposes.
Can we get a copy of the policy once it's back?
And the policy that you have, that he's provided already?
I passed it on to Morgan. I have a copy of it.
And let us look at it. I hate to say this, Blake, I really do, but can we table this till the next meeting?
Are you under a timeline?
A timeline? Do we have a chance to review all of this?
I think it'll be fine. The dog's ready for pickup, but, well, I mean, it's just another couple of weeks, so.
Yeah. It won't be but a couple of weeks. Yeah, it won't be but a couple of weeks. I just think we need to review all of this before we make this decision.
Alright. We had a motion that wasn't seconded. There's an interest in tabling this for a later discussion. Unless there's someone speaks to the contrary, we'll just plan to do that since we didn't have a second on the motion yet. Alright, consensus is to hold that till the next meeting. We'll bring it back up on their whole business.
The, the next one is-
Well, you have to say it.
Good night.
Alright.
Table it.
Alright, we'll, we'll get with you on that next item. We won't bring it up until we clarify a couple of things, just so we're on the same page on G. Commissioners, we'll just hold that for, I don't think it's time sensitive yet. H is considered approved for an employee contract. Share if anything else you want to share with us. Why, use the microphone? Alright, thank you. Commissioners, we have two of our employees that are contract employees. I guess there are only two. That's the county engineer and the county administrator. The engineer's contract was renewed a year or so ago, I guess. And now the administrators is up for renewal. The attorney has reviewed the contract. She's proposing two or three technical improvements to, to the contract. No changes in the terms necessarily, but Karen does an excellent job for us. I think we would all agree. We appreciate her commitment, dedication. And I certainly recommend that we renew it for another three-year term. At the very least, under the terms that are set forth in the current contract. But is there anything you want to address specifically before we act on it?
Just for clarification, there were two provisions that I made changes to. I'd summarized that in an email, and I apologize that that was so late in getting to you. One's boilerplate, the other, it was just really a recommendation. But otherwise, this contract is very, is, is in all respects the same version that she's, that you all have previously entered into.
So what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright.
Ken's gonna hold out for just a minute and make her sweat just a little bit.
Alright, so we have a motion to say, then let's discuss it and make her sweat.
I have a question.
Yeah. Any, are there any questions or points of clarification? I appreciate Morgan reviewing it and-
What's the, the term is, one year?
Three years.
Three years.
And it did come with no increase.
That's right. Current pay is, is what she's-
Karen agreed to the-
The same current salary.
Yes. The addition on the, I think the paper you sent out, that was the five percent pay raise, wasn't it? It- I know you said something about the difference in-
That's right. Under the terms, the contract employee receives the same increases the other county employees receive, yes.
I thought it probably was.
So that, so that increased amount will establish the pay that's in the contract going forward, so.
Correct.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote on it. Karen will let you lead the votes. Vote yes. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same say. Alright, that is approved, and we do appreciate your, your work.
Thank you all. Enjoy working with you.
Item I is considered solicitation of bids for loader. Lynn, that probably comes under your area, doesn't it?
It does.
And we don't have anything in the packet, also you're gonna have to go in great detail probably.
You know, we have a, one loader's down right now with a transmission issue. It's an '06 model, and that's a 250 wheeled excavator. And we've met with one of the sales reps, and we can get a comparable loader, actually a little bit larger one. They've got some used ones. It's got very low hours. I'm talking about less than almost 200. These generally sit on airports up north, shoveling, pushing off snow and stuff. Great looking machines, and we can then look, look at a new one, or possibly put out bids on a used one. And we, you know, we'd get bids from other vendors as well. We'd write the specs to, to be able to meet, other vendors can make, make, meet the bid. So I just recommend that we-
And you're, so the recommendation is to request bids on new or used loaders?
That's correct.
And then just determine which one meets our needs best?
That's correct. And the old one, that, it's a break even cost, looking, I think thirty or forty thousand dollars to replace it. And I'm looking at, that's twenty-five percent of what a new one, or a little bit less than what a new one would cost. So I think it'd be better maybe just to put that thing up for surplus and, and maybe get rid of it. It's just, I think it's just too costly to, to replace for the age of it and everything else.
Do you want to go ahead and declare it surplus today, or are you rather way-
I don't have that VIN number right now on top of my head, but I can get it for the next meeting.
Okay. So there's a request to approve solicitation of bids for a new or used loader. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, and also if he wants to declare that in surplus, can we go ahead and declare surplus based on him getting the VIN number to carry?
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, make that part of the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Anybody have questions on it?
What was the viability? I mean-
He had, there, there were several. We can get one off of a source well as well. There's avenues we can go and get a loader fairly quick, so.
But we don't have nothing right now.
No, we've got two other loaders, but this, this will be the third loader that we need. It's been down a while, so.
Okay. We have a motion and second. If there's nothing else, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same say. Alright, that's approved. What else?
I would stand a surplus of an old Ford F-250 that we have, it's '06 as well.
So just remind you, the mo, the motion that we just proved did declare the current loader surplus as soon as he communicates to our offices. And so the, is there a motion to surplus the-
F-250.
F-250.
I'll make a motion.
Two thousand and six model.
How many miles is on it?
It's a lot. Two or three hundred thousand. It's, it's got quite a few miles on it.
Ain't never been out to camp?
No. It needs to go to pasture, I put it that way.
So it wouldn't benefit any other department?
Uh, no, you wouldn't want this one.
There's motion and second. Any other questions? It's not like District Four, maybe you're looking, maybe in the market for one. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same say. That's approved. Put us to your floor, Lynn.
Bridge project is complete. They're in the forest, and that's the thing that wraps up our last flat products we have going on. They're putting up guardrails today on those, those bridges, at least one of those today. They'll probably finish the other one this week.
Beginning of bridge is why you're on that subject. The one that was crashed in with the log truck, what's the status on that?
We're still working on plans, getting that ready for the next flat. That's part of our next flat bridge, submittal. I'm working on the hydraulic stuff on that right now as well.
Yeah, the date, you know, projected date to have it-
I don't know, off the top of my head right now.
I was asked the other day, I was curious.
But we're looking at moving over to the Indian Creek Bridge. That's part of our, our rebuild. We're pursuing money otherwise, and a different, trying to get a grant for that as well. But that'll be the next one on Indian Creek. That's on a paved road. That's, and they're needed replacing as well. 107 project, we should finish up our rock tomorrow, I believe, on the, on all the rip wrap. And we'll get the base dirt hauling out. One of our employees that works on that job, he had a surgery on his foot. He's gonna be out for a week or two for that surgery. But I got John Harper, they're working, and I got Simon, they're working on that one right now as well. Our deeds are pretty much done for the Cross Murray Road. The surveyor went by and saw him this morning. I've got the deeds with, I've got the deeds in hand to get the signature, but I'm waiting on him to finish the plats. I've gotta submit that as well. So that's what it references, the roadway map or the plat with the deed. It showed the actual alignment and all that kind of stuff on those, on that project. So we'll start clearing here pretty quick on that road and getting that road ready for those citizens up there in that area. Bushhoggin, we're the whole District Four, and we got the whole north end of District One. Most of District Two is completed. Most part, we're down around, we're just making the, the whole circle again, coming back south. We're right around the Bueller Church Road area and North Creek and County Road thirty, or County Road forty-five, I read a road. We're getting close to that area right there where I'm bushhoggin.
What's the status on our pipe?
On driveway pipes or?
Well, yeah, because we still have some.
We're knocking them out. We had a pipe order come in. Those guys are putting those in.
So the pipe has come in?
Yeah, pipe has come in. We're working-
Estimate, how many is still remaining to be?
There's still quite a few out. There's twenty or thirty still work orders still out. That was, that was a bunch. That was a bunch of work.
Everybody hit us at the end.
Yeah, and we haven't had hardly any takers hardly at all. It's funny how there's, there's been none. It could be coincidental with the economy like it is. But, but we haven't, since we adopted that policy, we haven't had hardly any.
You gotta know where up to put them.
I wish that were the case. But we're all working on, we're paving, we paved wagon wheel this, they worked on Thursday or Friday, they paved wagon wheel. We got it completed. We paved to back the road yesterday. They're working on that little short, very short section of Kirkpatrick at the very end of that dead end road. And we're doing Pruitt Road there at Dunn's Bridge today as well. We're working, we got all the road cleared on, on the T.T. Clark Road, and our motor grader guys are working on it today. And we're getting that road ready to pave as well, so hopefully in a week or two we'll have that one. It's, the dirt road's already in place. It's just a little, it's a matter of shaping it up and getting it ready to pave with our ARPA funds. So that's where we are. Most of these are ARPA fund roads I'm talking about, so.
Memory still on the bucket?
I remember, yeah. I gotta look for our totals on about that we can get that one, yeah.
And they're going to get back to striping County Road Four as soon as they can, so?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're, they're in a class, they're, they'll be probably painting today, but they're in a class of, radiation class for their renewal for their inspectors today. They're in Troy for that refresh, of course. So it's something we gotta have for our inspectors.
I would, I would say, you know, it's very, it's obvious, really truthfully, when, when you do put new stripes on the road.
Yeah.
I was going down the, down the road talking to Ms. Lynn about something the other day on the phone, and the first thing, one of the first things, when I got there, I said, "We got stripes on this road," so it's very obvious, and appreciate what you're doing with that.
And we've done, we started County Road Four, we just ran out of paint, and we got paint in. It was right there at year end, POs and all that kind of stuff, but we got paint and, but we're getting those done. Because our, my paint crew is my inspectors as well, so everybody kind of wears a couple of hats in the county, and that's what, one of their duties, so.
And you're starting on some of the, the larger-
Yeah, we're doing all our major collectors, getting all our major collectors first, because that's where your bulk of your traffic's located, and that's one that we need to be hitting. So we'll get towards the smaller ones.
By the time they hit to the smaller roads, they'll be straight as in there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. The guys are doing good. It's a learning curve.
They had several compliments. It's, it's much needed and it's-
And we're getting there. The guys- My tolerance on my drive right now is about this, and we need to get about, there is about a four inch tolerance. That where he's at, needs to be about a two inch tolerance, and that's how much difference it makes on what a, what the stripe needs, as far as the look of it.
You want me and Karen to try one for you?
Y'all can try it. You can try it.
I don't think our insurance will cover that.
I was thinking y'all let me direct.
But it's been, we've been busy. Our partners have been extremely busy. We spent a lot of money the last month or so on, on projects and finishing whole projects. So in our FEMA, we've been working on FEMA projects as well. We're doing, getting rock out on the Lockhart Church Road.
Yes.
And we're finished, and they're all large projects. We got, I think, five groups. And the way FEMA works, you gotta get all the projects done. We're, we're having to absorb a lot of money cost right now, because the project's gotta be completed before we can actually submit the, for payment. So we have to get all those projects in that group done before we get payment.
107?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on the, the rip wrap ditches today. We should finish the rip wrap ditches this week. And we'll start on the, the final, that little bit of rock, and I hope, like I say, within just a couple of weeks, we'll have that thing, the middle section, the big ninety, ninety-five percent of the road paved. And then we'll work on the other two connectors, the two connectors.
Two weeks?
I'm not gonna give you a timeline. I've learned not to give timelines anymore.
Hoping within the next month.
Yeah, yeah.
Four snows, right?
Yes, yes.
Also, while you're here, we probably should have talked about it later if we can, the lights at Horn Hill. I know you were going to get pricing, and so just so we don't forget.
I'm pursuing every avenue on that, Ms. Lynn.
Gentlemen here.
Yes. We, we changed the bulbs, changed the fuse in it, and I've got, um, coming electric right now with a new switch box. I'm putting a new, a new switch box in this morning, trying to see if that's gonna fix it, because it could be just something electrical with the box, in order, it could just be just totally outdated. But I've got K&amp;K Systems makes a good lighted stop sign and caution signs, and that's what I'm gonna recommend. Could we put money in our budget, you know, to cover some of these other intersections for those, because that's an outdated product we have out there. And they're, they're all, and people are using for target practice. It's just one, the big beacon lights, and people shoot them out all the time, especially when they're sashes crossroads. That's a real bad spot for them to shoot. They shoot them out all the time. And you ought to see the housing, it's just real bullet holes, so.
I talked to Blake about it just the other day, because I just want deputies to be aware over there, maybe do a little extra patrolling and because it is a dark, dark spot, and I know y'all know that.
I saw a guy get put over last, or a young lady get put over yesterday, running the light there in front of Town Hall there in Anluzer last night. Matter of fact, it's Chef Debbie, pulled her over right there in town. He caught her right there, running a red light there in town. So I witnessed that myself yesterday, so.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you and your department. Commissioners, it's, next on the agenda is discussion items that you guys have. Anybody have anything you want to bring? Ms. Karen, do you have anything?
Just like to mention that we have Alabama Little Riches coming this weekend for their show. They'll start coming in on Friday. Their show is during the day. They start Saturday morning around eight-thirty, nine o'clock. They'll run to about four, four-thirty, five o'clock, four and how long, how many contestants and how long. And then they'll start back again Sunday morning, Cowboy Church, around eight-thirty. And then also we have the, the Kiwanis are having the fair, so there'll be the traffic coming into that, but they can come watch the rodeo during the day and go to the fair that night.
Two for.
That's right.
It was sure crowded last night when I went by there. So they're having a, a good fair, I believe.
Filled up the arena parking lot.
Yeah, everything, yeah.
Alright, anything else?
I have no questions, believe it or not.
No comment either? Okay, well, we will- Yeah, alright, what's got?
Alright.
The garbage extension program ends Friday at four o'clock. So if anyone is interested in applying for that, I know these times are getting hard, and there's certain rules you have to go by, but if they're interested, just-
What, what are the rules generally?
You have to have social security income, and that's the only income that you have in the home.
Okay.
And you can't have any savings, any CDs, any other number elsewhere else. But then they'll just give us the documentation of proof, and then they'll be approved, and then we'll start the following January.
And that's, that's controlled by law. It's not something that we establish or set at our local level, so we're just trying to-
Is that something you have in writing that you could email to us?
I have the form, yeah.
That, that stipulates the requirement, okay.
But they need to call you.
Just come to the office.
Come to the office.
They work at the beginning and tomorrow, or Friday at four.
Yes, sir.
I had a thought, I had to mention one thing. Michael Smith, I met with the developer there, LA Ford, just right there at the County Line, right there, John here plays.
City limit, city limit.
And we had mentioned more of the cost share. Michael, you want to talk about this, or you want to discuss this?
The, the developer is looking to build in a, a, me and Lynn kind of took offense. He said a senior living facility, apartment complex about there, but you gotta be fifty-five years old to get in. It's not a family dwelling. It's gonna be located back in behind the cemetery. What is that, the Stone Lake Cemetery out there? And he was wanting the road to be-
Christie Lane.
Christie Lane to be basically paved down there, and he is willing to pay, Lynn, best I can remember, for all the stuff-
All the materials, yeah.
For it to be done.
Can you do the work, we'll ask to do the work and just get rid of the rest of the materials, curving, asphalt, base dirt, base stuff.
After all the rest of our paving progress?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, they're, they're a little ways out.
Yeah.
It's just a major fifteen, seventeen million dollar project.
Project. He says somewhere, I think, between ten to fifteen million of somewhere in that neighborhood, but it's gonna be, gosh, I can't remember like, and I, and I could be wrong, but it's about what, sixty or seventy houses?
Sixty, and you're gonna move it?
Apartment type thing.
So do you wanna, do you wanna get a project number four, bring it to the next meeting for us to act on? So that he'll know there's a commitment for that if the commission chooses, because that's gonna be important.
He wants to give me, I need to give him a letter just stating that. I was kind of, I apologize, I'm pregnant of a bunch.
Okay. We can act on it now with the description you just gave, or we can bring it to the next meeting. What are your wishes?
I'd act on it now, I'd make some part of that. I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion and second that we make a commitment as, as requested to the project. He, and he's covering materials, so it's gonna be up to us to build-
It'd be very beneficial.
Yeah, to the community.
Yes.
Alright, any other questions, all of you?
Rachel.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say. Alright. You'll generate that letter, Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good job, Commissioner Smith.
Alright, anything else? Eric, do you have anything? Rachel? If not, we stay in the jury.